Okay. I'm calling to order the meeting at 5 o'clock and approval of the agenda.
I move for approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So, vote trustee Kuziak.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That makes four zero. Ms. Trustee Whitaker is on a business trip. So, we will now recess to closed session. Oh, no, public comment regarding closed session items? None? We will recess to closed session. Alrighty, we are calling the meeting to order for the open session and let's see. So, here we are. Trustee Whitaker is excused from tonight's meeting due to work-related travel. And we do not have any action that we took in closed session. We have our admission statement now, which will be read by trustee Howard.
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you, trustee Howard. We now have our public comment instructions. Trustee Kuziak will read these.
The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request-to-speak blue form on the back table or via the request-to-speak form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment, but we can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented.
Thank you. Thank you very much, trustee Kuziak. We are now going to have our school report from Proctor Elementary School. And many of you are here for that, and we're so glad to have you. If we could have our principal, Mr. Jeffrey Keller, come on up.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, parvane cabinet. So, our presentation, we worked, one of our goals that we added this year was to have like a wise goal to improve our culture and climate of our school and to align also with the district leadership focus too. We recognize while progress has been made, there is still room for growth, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But people, when they first come onto campus, they go right into the office. And so, that's kind of their first experience, and that kind of sets the tone for how the school feels. And one thing I can say about our office is that we do communicate well in various ways. I'm going to touch on that in a moment. But the staff in there is very welcoming, have a great sense of humor, and gosh darn it, we're fun. Communication with families. So, first of all, Hilda speaks Chinese Mandarin. I speak Spanish. And Vicki? Okay. So, that's one way that we accommodate families. We don't have every language mastered within our office, but with our population, there are a lot of families that we, between the three of us, that we're able to communicate with. You guys want to come up here for this, or you guys find there? Okay. Also, Hilda uses, so when I write letters and news goes out, she uses smores. So, families are able to read our newsletter in so many different languages. In the beginning of the year, we also did a lot of, we actually asked families. We sent out two different surveys to families about how can we be more welcoming, inclusive, and equitable? And we did incorporate some of their ideas this year. Ideas were also discussed at coffee time with the principal, PTA, and school site council. Also, a lot of phone calls were made to get input from families and to invite them to certain events. Okay, and this is one thing that families, that they mentioned in their feedback to us is they wanted to see, they wanted to see more assemblies that represented their traditions, cultures, and customs. The district used to pay for rhythmic, and because of budget cuts, they weren't able to pay for that this last year or this year. We decided because of the focus, because of the feedback provided to us from families, that we would use site funds and bring them back. So, we brought them back. Actually, they're coming for Manila Town for Asian American Heritage Month. We had Rogue Rhythms for Latino Caribbean, So Vos So for Black History Month, Lion Dance. We had Lunar New Year, which actually was not rhythmic. We hope to continue that this next year. We also, once a month, do Proctor Pride assemblies where we recognize kids who exhibit certain character traits. And as well, Hilda was influential, and I know you had a team, but in bringing, we did, in November, we did a Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. And there were lots of activities done in the classroom and as a school. So, also, just as we have a school goal for making our school more welcoming, inclusive, and equitable, I had each grade level also come up with a goal. And one of the things that each grade level also did is they surveyed families for what traditions do they celebrate at home? And so, they made sure to actually invite parents in. Sometimes, parents were part of the presentation. Were they honored and celebrated, recognized other customs and traditions? And then, I'm going to invite Jennifer Bremmer to come up and talk about a couple of things. One is Battle of the Books that she runs and also our school library.
The library before this? That's fine. So, the library always touches on the holidays and different events and the heritage months that happen every year. And that's something that we've always done on this collage. You'll see a bunch of the different highlights. We always have an area where those books are highlighted throughout the month. In addition, you know, like we just had, we're in the middle of Ramadan ending. And so, I make sure I have books for every single holiday. And we read a lot of stories that involve other cultures, even other languages. And the kids really love it when they hear themselves in a book. They get so excited and they want to jump up. And if I'm mispronouncing anything, you know, they love to jump up and help out. And so, that's wonderful. California Young Reader Medal is something that we've done every year since I've been in the library. It's a wonderful program. The books are very diverse, and the kids really enjoy it. Every week, they come in during February and March, and we read those books. And then, there's a big vote. And so, you'll see down on the bottom, some voting. We play a little game. How much do they remember from the books? And then, they get to vote for their favorites. And that's a way to really get them involved in reading, remembering for a long time. And we just, we really get down to the fine details, like, do you remember what someone said? You know, very, very detailed questions. And my kindergartners will just nail it every time. They'll just get that information. They're paying attention. We also celebrate a lot of things. Yola Bokaflod, which means Book Flood in Icelandic, is a tradition that happens in Iceland, and it's something that we started in the library and across the school. So, we do reading all day in the classrooms. The kids get to wear their jammies. And I, my volunteers, student and parents, put together a hot cocoa party. And we just decorate one room, and it's just fun. It's a day of reading and celebrating. So, we really make reading a very important part of our culture. And activities as well. You'll see on here, kids playing the dreidel game. That's always a favorite for Hanukkah. And bringing in, this year was really fun. From the high school, we had Your Red Envelope group. It's a club there, really highlighting Asian heritage. And they came in and did some displays and videos for the kids, and they loved it because one of the young girls who runs that was an ESL student at Proctor. And so, to hear her do the video really, really showed a lot for the other kids. And along with that, Battle of the Books is, I think this is our 14th year, 13th or 14th year of doing it at Proctor. And this is a wonderful program. The kids have to read all year long. Fourth and fifth grade reads 14 books, third grade reads 12, and the second graders read 10. They have to read at least half of those to qualify. Last year, we had 165 students participate. So, it's gotten so big, we have to break it up to different levels. I encourage you all, if you'd like to come help out and volunteer for one, to let me know. They're coming up after spring break. This is a program where the books are all different genres. You might have something like, we have the kite fighters this year, which is 1400s Soul Korea. We have, you know, for the third graders, Sadako. We have books that have a Hispanic and a lot of Spanish language in for our second graders. I mean, there's, it just, it crosses all different cultures. And so, it's a really great program. It introduces kids to things they wouldn't normally read. And I absolutely love that I hear from parents every year how much that turned their child into a reader. And so, that is just so fun. And I know Marshall, I've worked with Robin over at Marshall, and they've been doing it for a few years now. And I'm working with Vanoy and getting them started this year. And so, I'm very excited about that. I'd love to have that be a district.
Ready, Devin?
Couldn't find pants in the closet. So, PE teacher, Mr. Moran, Devin Moran. I think I'd like to start by saying, a couple of students here hopefully agree that the lowest moment of the day is when I send the kids back to class. With the multicultural music, I have all sorts of music playing so often that the classroom doors are shutting because they're so loud the music's going, that people are vibing. So, I have, yeah, I have a mix of music. I have reggae, I have salsa, merengue, French music. One of our pares is French, and so, she's asked me to play French songs. Electronic music, 80s, got to keep the dads involved when they pick up the kids. Tribal drumbeats when we had the Chinese dragons, when the dragon assembly came. We, I put those on afterwards, and the kids were really like getting rhythmic on the benches and stuff at recess. That was a lot of fun. One game that has grown from me going outdoor school in sixth grade that I'm so excited to apply to my teaching is Gaga Ball, which is touch-touch ball, translated to touch-touch ball. And it is an Israeli-based summer camp activity that I discovered and was exposed to at outdoor school from Creekside. And it's really fun. Mr. Keller will sometimes come down when he can escape an IEP meeting. After, in between IEP meetings, he never leaves early. But when he can, he'll come down, and he likes to join us in Gaga Ball. Some pares get involved. The kids love it. Any rainy day that's depressing and gray clouds turns into like their most looked forward to day because they get to get each other out and have fun. Very competitive. That's seen up top here. The kids playing Gaga Ball outside. Dragon Tail Tag is a game that I discovered this two, three weeks ago, where kids are working as a small team to defend a tail at the back of a long snake of students, incorporating teamwork and communication and running around and strategy. So, I like to incorporate not just tagging back and forth, but different styles of tagging, team tagging, colorful ways with hoops and scarves and stuff that I use. And then, when it's rainy day, if I can, if I have access to a projector and stuff, I've been putting up YouTube videos and Peloton videos where the kids are not just doing a sit-up, sit-down, squats, push-ups, but we're getting kickboxing in and yoga, different exposures to different ideas. I really like the Has Fit channel. Shout out to them. They're not sponsoring me, but the Has Fit channel, I really like them because it's a man and a woman. They're modifying instruction where we have someone going super intense, high intensity, and we have someone going slower, lower impact. If anyone's injured, if they have a, you know, broken leg, broken arm, they can modify, and the kids can see the variety, the diversity of the instruction. Again, involving the pares. The pares are realizing that they also can participate in not just help the kids they're working with, but model for the kids they're working with. Another Peloton thing, Mr. Keller walked in, and that's the reason I'm here, is because Mr. Keller saw me working with Logan Aldridge on Peloton, who is a above-the-arm, above-the-elbow amputee. He lost his arm in an accident. And he's got a bunch of energy, and I was excited. I'm excited to show him with his, with his energy for the kids, energy for fitness, and showing that even him with a completely missing arm is able to do push-ups in a modified way. Able to do sit-ups, able to do plank and all these things, arm curls and stuff that show the kids that they can push through the adversity. And then, most recently this year, last point, I've got fourth and fifth grade helpers that are loving PE so much that they're volunteering their recess time at lunch to come help teach the first graders, which are a rambunctious bunch. But they're donating their time, and I'm letting them teach activities and what they've learned in their past four years. They're giving back to their first graders, and they're teaching them how to problem solve, and they're teaching them, reviewing them, reviewing with them the rules and stuff, and the different ways that they teach and trying to teach them how to teach is very fun. And yeah, PE is super fun. And we incorporate as much as we can, like I said, the worst time of the day is when the kids leave the class. So, thank you.
You make it fun, Devin. I think that's the end. I'll say in closing that I'm proud of how it feels, and we get lots of comments from different community members and parents about how it feels once they step onto campus and that their kids are surrounded by caring adults. I do think that there's room for growth, and I think, and one next step is that what we're trying to do with learning about celebrating, incorporating different cultures and customs and traditions, that's something that shouldn't be done just during like Lunar New Year or Black History Month. It's something that should be integrated into everything we do, every day, every week, every month. That's the next step, but I won't be here for it. You guys know I'm retiring, okay? So, now we do the recognitions, right?
A couple of questions perhaps from, do the presentation first. Oh, okay. It's okay. All right. Trustee Kuziak is going to be presenting the recognition of Proctor Elementary School student Kate Tam.
Kate Tam, come on down.
Come on over here, Kate. I'm about to give you this certificate. I'm going to read something about you. Is that cool? Okay. So, the governance team, we're the governance team with Proctor Elementary School, are proud to honor Kate Tam. Let's all clap. As an outstanding student, Kate is a true gem of a young person. She's a wonderful friend, teammate, student, sister, daughter, and a proud bearded dragon caretaker. She has a very caring and nurturing nature and is someone who others can count on in so many ways. She accepts others and embraces their differences. She works well with others, is a friend and teammate to everyone, and is a classroom mentor who assists others with their project work and learning. She has quite a demeanor, yet she is incredibly strong, yet is an incredibly strong individual. She's a strong advocate for herself and her learning. Her kindness and empathy has been a strong asset of hers as she is on our Positive Patriots leadership team. She helps out with various activities and projects around the school, including cheerfully greeting students in the morning as a morning greeter and making sure students are safe in our parking lot after school during pickup. She has spoken at school assemblies and helps out with leadership activities with a smile on her face and with an enthusiastic attitude. She also plays violin beautifully in our Proctor Strings Ensemble and was a very creative and artistic individual. She is bilingual and speaks both Mandarin and English. She has family in Taiwan and visits them in the summer. Kate also volunteers in her community through Kids Against Hunger Food Bank and is looking forward to volunteering more as she gets older. Proctor is incredibly proud to have Kate Tam to be recognized in front of the CBUSD School Board. She represents the best qualities of Proctor Pride. Congratulations. And Kate, if you want to, if you want to give a speech, you don't have to. Is there anyone out here you want to recognize to say thank you to or say hello to?
I want to say thank you to my family because they're always supporting me, and my sister always inspires me.
Is she bribing you?
No. I want to say thank you to my teachers for teaching me so much and like helping me with everything. And thank you to everyone here.
Thank you. We're proud of you.
We are now going to have recognition of the Proctor Elementary School volunteer Ebony O'Megla. Please come on up.
Come on up. Hi. So, the governance team, along with Proctor Elementary School, are proud to honor you, Ebony, as our outstanding volunteer. Proctor Elementary would like to celebrate and thank you for all that she has done for the school community over time. She was unanimous choice for the staff. Over the years, Ebony has done much as a parent volunteer in support of the track team. By the way, she herself was a college track star. Ebony has organized and supported staff appreciation lunches. She spoils Proctor. Ebony has also helped with the campus beautification by tending to the school garden and ordering picnic tables and umbrellas for students. Ebony was also a leading force in developing Proctor's Juneteenth celebrations. She is always one of the first people to volunteer for events or tasks, no matter what is needed. Ebony cares deeply for students and staff at all of the schools where she volunteers. She's always smiling, upbeat, and positive. Ebony gives a lot of her time and energy, works hard, and does not like to take any credit. We are proud to celebrate all her hard work and give her the recognition she deserves. The governance team, along with Proctor Elementary, are proud to honor you.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Proctor deserves being spoiled. You guys are all awesome, and we've been so lucky to be part of the family for so long. I'm sad that this is our last year. Congratulations, Jeff, on your retirement. And thank you to my boss, aka my husband, who's very flexible with my schedule, which allows me to do so much volunteering on campus. So, thank you, guys, and thank you for even having this award.
All right then. Now, we will have questions and comments with our board members, starting with trustee Kuziak.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the presentation. It was such a deep dive into two very specific areas about what's happening in your school with the common thread of really talking about the diversity of our school community. As I tell so many people in Castor Valley, just look at our schools. It's the future of this community. And it's such, it's so much more diverse, I would say, than Castor Valley writ large. And I think oftentimes that gets forgotten as people talk about our schools and they think about what the needs of our school communities are. So, I just want to thank you for the intentionality, welcoming all into your school community. I was never a big fan of PE, but maybe I should stop by and hang out with you. You sound like the type of PE teacher that any kid would love, and I really appreciate that. And the really focusing on reading, I think, is a wonderful thing that we're engaging kids early in doing that. I wanted to say to Kate, it was really an honor to give you your award. And I hope that next year, as you continue in your studies, that you continue being a shining star and you continue just stepping up for your school community. And Ebony, I like you a lot. You know, we're a baseball family. And we spent a lot of time, a lot of time just hanging out, watching baseball together. And I know the passion that you have for the things that you step up for. And I know that Proctor has been something, I met you through your efforts a few years ago. I think you were like trying to get shoes. And, you know, how this school community, I don't know if anyone says this, and maybe, I'm just going to say it. During COVID in particular, how this school community rallied was exceptional. Y'all started that, I think at the time, it was a weekly food drive, and it's still going, I think, every few weeks. But thank you for being a part of that. I have to say hey to little Riz over there. How's he doing? Hey. Hey. I just want to say to Mr. Keller, you know, I've been so blown away by your ability to build a really strong community there. I've heard many progress reports from many people throughout the community. What stands out to me is just how you go in there and connect with all of your students. On multiple occasions, I'm like, did you know he plays soccer, right? And I've gotten reports of you just, you know, really engaging with the students and doing that. So, I really want to wish you a fantastic retirement. If you still want to practice some Deutsch mit Miel, I would be very happy to do that with you. But otherwise, I hope you have a great trip to Mexico, and I just want to wish you great success. And thank you for all you've done at Proctor.
Trustee Howard.
Well, thanks for a terrific report. It's always interesting to see what's going on up at Proctor. It's a great school, has a long tradition of being at the forefront of a lot of things. And I was really impressed by the collages of photos that you put together because they're so colorful and fun-looking, which is fantastic. And I think, you know, what you said toward the end of trying to incorporate inclusion and diversity into every day is really a good thing. The assemblies are terrific, but they're not every day. But they're a great manifestation of it nonetheless. And I really like the other things that you're doing with the books and PE being very imaginative in both of those, giving, encouraging children to, one, do things that they will be doing for the rest of their life, hopefully, reading and exercising, and also giving them something to do other than be on their cellphone and computer screens, which is a struggle these days with every child. So, thanks for all of that. The school looks great up there, by the way. I'm really impressed by that always. And to Kate, Ebony, and Jeff, thanks and congratulations, and good luck with all your future adventures. Thank you.
Trustee Raymond.
I'll try to keep it brief because I share the thoughts of my colleagues up here. And I do want to say about EE is one of those things where, you know, you don't hear a lot of PE teachers really stressing the fact that there are different ways to be physical and different bodies can be successful in many ways. And so, I really, I think it's fantastic that you are really kind of like trying to drum that in and make sure kids know that no matter what, your body may have limitations, you may have physical, you know, challenges, but there are still ways. no matter what your, your body may have limitations, you may have physical challenges, but there are still ways to enjoy movement and to be strong. So that's really, that was really nice to hear. And I really do hope that the worst moment of the student's day is leaving your class because it does sound really fun. At first I was like, I don't know, it's not what I remember PE, but but I was like, I'll give it a listen and see where it goes. But no, it sounds fantastic and really fun. And the library, I have to say, library was always my favorite place to volunteer as a parent when my kids are in elementary. It's, it's such a great haven, you know, for kids at school. And clearly you're creating like a fantastic like library community, you know, and it's infiltrating all of the school. It's just really great. Yeah, and congratulations to our honorees and good luck in your retirement. Sounds really wonderful. Can't wait to retire myself, but it will be a while. All right, thanks.
Yeah. So I'll share a couple of things as well. I, you know, kind of dittoing what everyone said, I wanted to add that you, in fact, you are including all of those things throughout because the reading programs, PE, all of it, really you're incorporating so many wonderful things and diverse cultures and honoring cultural wealth of this community. So just wonderful things. I don't know if you noticed, but every single kid in every single one of those pictures had a big smile on their face. It tells, it says a lot. It's a beautiful place. I want to say thank you to Kate for all of the things you do, a great, well-rounded student, but all the volunteerism that you've already started and as you move forward. I want to thank the staff who's here, the, you know, the office staff as well as teachers. And I have to say, when I see, every time I'm at Proctor, I really want to, I wish I had my tennis shoes on because he rocks it. It's absolutely amazing. Kids are engaged and I can see that they wouldn't want to just stop. And to your point, that's what physical education is supposed to be. That you use your strength and you learn how to engage with your body and your mind. So, and I want to just say a couple of words about Mr. Keller who's retiring. When he was telling us where he's going, everyone's like, can we come with you? But it's been amazing to have him here, just the energy and he has the biggest heart for kids. He cares so much about children and it comes through in everything that the school does. And last but not least, California Young Readers Program was my favorite as a teacher. And I completely agree with you. So thank you for everything you do in the library. Thank you.
Okay. I have so many good things really to say about Proctor School. My daughter was able to go there from fourth and fifth grade. She just got married last year. Two of her best friends from Proctor were her bridesmaids. And when they got married, she was one of the bridesmaids. So the three of them are very strong friends and it all started at Proctor. So I like that you got in the rhythmic. They seem like a really very good Proctor pride and groovy bridges. I want to thank Jennifer very much. I know Jennifer and their family a little bit. And turning, parents saying, turning their children into a reader. That is just such a fantastic, important thing that you're doing there is turning kids into real readers. Mr. Miranda with your PE and the music. And alternate to dodgeball, right? Dodgeball has always been a sort of a more controversial type of game. And to find something that kids to be just as engaged in is really wonderful. The other thing I want to say about what you're doing there is by having a person there with a disability. You know, I'm a sped teacher, so I really like to see that, that kids with disability, that might have disabilities, physical or otherwise, can see an adult on there, you know, trying their best and doing PE also. And then older kids helping younger. When I was at Redwood, I would have the kids from my class help some of the other kids. And I always found that that was rewarding for both the younger kids and the older kids. So thank you so much and thank you to Kate Tam for being such a wonderful student. And to Ebony, without people like you in our schools, there's so much that wouldn't happen. So thank you for making all of that happen and making Proctor a better school and putting in your time and energy. And to Principal Keller, have a wonderful retirement. We, congratulations on that and thank you so much for your service to CBUSD. Would you, Principal Keller, would you like to introduce any of your other staff or did you introduce them all? I don't know. Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Principal Keller, and thank you all of the staff from Proctor. Our great school. So we would, at this point, we just have a couple more things. We would have a student board member report, but she was not able to come today. So we are going to go to the superintendent's district report and then after that we will have a recess. Okay?
Thank you. Next slide. Just a couple of things. I want to congratulate Independent Elementary in Palomares. It was announced today that they are California Distinguished Schools in, for this year. Wanted to just say last night at the high school, we had the African-American Student Achievement Award Night and it was absolutely a beautiful celebration of our students' excellence. And Dr. Fields and Mr. Fortenberry did a beautiful job. Such a beautiful event. And they, there was a wonderful speaker as well. Just, it's always wonderful to see, to have an opportunity to thank our students for what they're doing and to celebrate them. So just a beautiful ceremony. One other thing I wanted to let everyone, remind everyone is we have facilities, community meetings that are coming up. They're all virtual. We encourage you to attend April 15th, 18th, 22nd, and 24th. For staff and community members, we want to hear from you about our facilities and just kind of share some ideas about what we are thinking about and ask for your feedback. We have had lots and lots of comments through thought exchange already. But we would appreciate hearing from you and for you to just kind of listen to the presentation and tell us what your thoughts are. And next slide. I wanted to thank our TV tip coach, tip coaches. Tri-Valley Teacher Induction Program is absolutely a game changer for any new teacher. And the teachers you see in front of you, some are from our school district, some are from Dublin and Livermore. So the three of our school districts have a collaborative. And this program is unique because not every district has actually a teacher induction program. So you know, when teachers finish their, complete their preliminary credential, once they start teaching within the first five years, they do need to go through a second tier of credentialing. And that could be going to another place and paying for it and really not being connected or through an induction program that's embedded in our district. So this is a beautiful thing. So they're with teacher, new teachers, two years, they coach, it's job embedded. They're together, they provide support to them, and that's why our new teachers actually continue to stay. That is not the case statewide or nationally. So I want to thank our TV tip because they, for the last three years, they've worked together. It's very difficult to be accredited. And this was to, this week was their accreditation process. And the state was here. Dr. Zamora supports them directly as well. And we were there when they reported out that they were just in awe of what this group does and so incredibly appreciative of their work. So there's a process to be accredited and that's what they went through. So very proud of our team and this collaborative. And I also want to thank the board because about four years ago, when one of the other districts that was a partner kind of pulled out and we were left to see it because they were the lead agency and we said, we're not going to let that happen. We came together as three districts and made it happen. So just wanted to recognize them. That's my report.
Harveen, if we can just go back really quickly on the facilities thing. What I really appreciate is that you are using thought exchange. I know when we're doing public engagement and stakeholder engagement, it can be really frustrating from a public's point of view. You don't really see how your opinions are being synthesized. And thought exchange is this very dynamic way to take lots of information and aggregate it. To really, it's such an effective tool and I appreciate that as a tool that we're using. I hope as a board, as we continue, you know, our search for your replacement, that could be also a tool that we could look at. But I'm really excited that you guys are doing that type of engagement. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kuziak. We are now going to take about a five-minute break. We will come back at quarter to seven. If you need to leave, you have kids here and whatnot. We do though have a presentation that's coming up from by Blaine Torpey and, right, these guys. So we, you know, they're pretty cool. So you can stay if you like. All right. California School Employees Association, CIA. Is anyone here from CIA? Amy? Oh, okay. Hi Connie. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you Superintendent Amati, our Assistant Superintendents, and the entire Board of Education for your continued support of classified employees in the Castor Valley Unified School District. Together, our union and our district have a wonderful history of working together to prevent layoffs and encourage professional training and build a strong team that provides a workplace for people who are dedicated to serving the educational needs of our diverse community. The most recent example of this collaboration between CSEA and Castor Valley Unified was to update our current job descriptions for our office assistants, technicians, specialists, and other specialized clerical staff. Together, we were able to ensure that our classified members are working within the parameters of their respective job descriptions and that they are being properly classified and compensated for the duties that they are tasked with performing. As a result of this study, several classified employees were moved into a higher classification and pay range. Special appreciation will go out to Deborah Buckland, Chrissy Becerra, Jill Baldwin, Dustin Goshere, Raul Zamora, and Jennifer Tapia Smith for their hard work, time, and expertise that they also put into this process. Without them and the input of our chapter membership, this process would not have taken place. Now that the administrative services, job reviews, and reclassifications have been completed, we can look forward to surveying and studying the paraprofessional branch of our classified family tree. We plan on doing this in the fall of 2025 and hopefully in the spring of 2026. Our next group, the Child Nutrition Employees, will be reviewed next. Because of the vigilant and careful monitoring of the job descriptions, Because of the vigilant and careful monitoring of the job descriptions within the many branches of the bargaining unit and because we schedule job reclass studies on a five-year rotation, our district is able to maintain a finely tuned classified workforce that has accurate job descriptions and is appropriately compensated. As you all are aware, sunshine proposals are a necessary and early step in contract negotiations. Before formal contract negotiations can begin, CSEA Chapter 52 and CVUSD must release their initial bargaining proposals in a public meeting forum. This is done so that the public is informed about the issues being negotiated and has an opportunity to comment on those proposals. With that said, CSEA Castro Valley Chapter 52 and the Castro Valley Unified School District are currently parties to a collective bargaining agreement with a three-year term of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. This current collective bargaining agreement will remain in full effect until a new contract is reached. Therefore, in accordance with Section 3547 of the California Government Code, CSEA Chapter 52 hereby submits its initial bargaining proposal for the upcoming 2025-2028 successor contract negotiations. Current articles already in our contract to be opened are Article 4 Compensation, Article 5 Overtime, Article 6 Health and Welfare Benefits, Article 7 Leaves of Absence with Pay, Article 12 Reduction in Workforce, Articles 21 and 22 Reopeners in Duration, and Appendix C, The Longevity Plan. In addition to opening existing articles, CSEA Castro Valley Chapter 52 will be proposing several new articles that the chapter membership has deemed necessary for addition to our contract and worthy of negotiation. They are language concerning artificial intelligence, language regarding uniforms for certain classifications, reimbursement for personal items that are damaged in the course of classified work, such as eyeglasses, and necessary safety items for certain classifications. Lastly, CSEA Chapter 52 intends to explore and negotiate language regarding workload ratios and staffing. Additionally, CSEA reserves the right to sunshine any other article of the collective bargaining agreement during the party's upcoming successor negotiations and to revise and/or rectify any identified typographical errors to the collective bargaining agreement and update appendices as necessary. We look forward to reviewing the district's initial proposal and scheduling dates to commence negotiations. It is the hope of the negotiation committee, the Chapter 52 leadership, and the over 365 Chapter 52 members that together we will be able to agree upon a contract that will both recognize and compensate the hard work and dedication given by our various classified professionals every day. Given the current climate in education, retaining qualified and experienced employees will become more and more challenging. As inflation continues to rise, other alternatives to working in education have become considerably more attractive for classified and certificated employees throughout Alameda County and the Greater Bay Area. It is the expectation of the many and varied members of Chapter 52 that Castro Valley Unified will continue to work diligently and collaboratively with CSEA to not only retain its current classified staff, but also to be able to attract and hire new classified employees who are highly trained and capable of upholding the professional standards that the Castro Valley community has come to expect from our local school district. CSEA Castro Valley Chapter 52 is looking forward to entering into negotiations with the Castro Valley Unified School District as a means to continue the successful partnership we have achieved together in providing our community with resolute and well-compensated classified staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present our negotiation news and thank you all for the work you do on behalf of the students of the Castro Valley Unified School District every day. And this is Manuel. He's my chief job steward in Chapter 52. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report. Do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Uh, just Connie, I always appreciate your updates and wanted to make a shout out to paraprofessionals. I was excited that you mentioned them, uh, as a project. I just got to meet my son's para and I think a lot of people don't appreciate what an important role they play. And I just want to just raise awareness of the importance of paras and I want to thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody, Laura, or, uh, somebody from CVTA? Yes. Laura, thank you. Got these, uh, up close glasses on you now.
Good evening. Thank you as always for leaving space in the agenda for CVTA to address the board. I want to begin tonight by acknowledging Superintendent Amadi's retirement announcement. It has truly been my pleasure to work with you first as a parent, then an educator in the district, and most recently as CVTA's president. Your steadfast commitment not only to CVUSD, but all students and aspects of California public education is admirable. I have enjoyed watching your vision take shape and partnering with you in recent years to help that vision come to life. Your presence in these hallways will be missed, but I know we haven't heard the last from you. Enjoy your next endeavors and whatever adventures open up to you as a result. Similar to my previous addresses to the board, I stand here tonight with collaboration as my ultimate goal. As this school year moves quickly toward closure, there is still much work to be done in partnership. Unanswered questions, uncertainty, and healthy skepticism remain around what's now being called proportional grading practices, despite listening sessions taking place across secondary school sites. We are tasked with finding a new superintendent who will hopefully craft their own vision of CVUSD's future while upholding the humane, community-affirming practices and policies Superintendent Amadi has ushered in. And we must return to the bargaining table shortly to begin the negotiations process anew, this time with the whole contract being open for revision. To that end, CVTA sunshine several articles we'd like to reopen with the goal of improving student learning experiences and working conditions for our certificated staff members. We are grateful to CVUSD management for the cooperation they've shown at the bargaining team, I'm sorry, at the bargaining table over the past several years. There is no doubt that changes that have been jointly agreed upon make Castro Valley a more attractive district for prospective employees and entice our dedicated educators to stay in the district, which is so very important during this precarious time in education. With fewer and fewer professionals choosing a career in education, the working conditions outlined in the contract become even more important. Our most important collaborative work, however, remains serving our students. We will continue to challenge them to ensure that they have the knowledge base, well-rounded skill sets, and readiness for the next grade level. It is our privilege to work with such incredible young people and watch them grow into their potential. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. We are, we now have a public comment for items not on the agenda. And I have one blue card here. That would be Frances Mellon. You'd have three minutes. Please come on up.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about the opportunity the school ward has with regards to the selection of a new superintendent. I'm a bit dismayed at how the process has come to thus far. March 12th, a letter was written by President Dolly Adams. I've given you all a sheet with two different sets of information on it. One was my letter to the Castro Valley Forum and the other was quoting directly from Ms. Adams. It says, "To be transparent to all of our stakeholders in the community, we are embarking on a significant personnel action. As such, we will not be sharing specific information about any candidate until we announce our newest superintendent." Every one of you ran on a platform of inclusion and transparency. To tell us, you ain't going to know nothing till we're done. That's as far from transparency as I can imagine. I heard words of collaboration. I heard words about cultural wealth. And one of the things that I saw along the way was how you showed your transparency by having a meeting this past Sunday morning at 9:00 AM regarding your selection process. Now clearly you have the right to have confidential selection process, but it says there'll be chance for public comment. 9:00 AM on a Sunday. So I'm going to leave you with this thought. Alameda County just recently went through a process in the selection of a new district attorney. They had a fully open and transparent process. People knew who the candidates were. They knew they had a chance to comment on the candidates. They had a chance to put questions in there. Why can't you guys do that? What makes you so elite that the rest of us don't belong in what I quote from a moment ago, in the cultural wealth of this community going forward? You're blowing a huge opportunity here. Open it up. Have public hearings. It won't hurt. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you for your comment, Mr. Mellon. We will now, uh, move to, um, the consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Kuziak.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond. And I will also vote yes. That's four zero. We have approved the consent agenda. We now have our reports, discussion, and action items. The first one is from the Castro Valley Arts Foundation, CVAF, annual report. Yes, we're excited to have, yeah, Ms. Terry Lubowitz and Ms. Maryann.
I, Maryann and I sort of go back and forth as to who's the president. I happen to be good for me right now. And so Maryann is the vice president. We really appreciate being able to tell you what we've done in the past year and we're pretty excited and proud of what we've done. So I'm going to talk about programs and Maryann's going to talk about what we've done in terms of money and what we've bought for the, um, Center for the Arts. So when I talk about our programs, please know that everything we've done and accomplished has been with volunteers. We have an amazing team. Uh, starting out with Sean Cooper's mother, Linda Cooper, and she answers the phone. So it goes right into her house. So, uh, if you see in the forum and it says for tickets, you know, you can go online or if you'd rather call, if you call, you get Linda and she takes care of all those sorts of things, which is really wonderful. So number one, we have this box office phone number. Number two, we have usher programs so that anything that happens in the center has an usher or a house manager or a box office person that, that we have trained and, uh, sometimes there's people that Sean has trained. If, if, if we run out of people, he will have one of the kids, uh, come in and he's trained them. But I think that what this has done for us and for our center is that all these people really care. And sometimes people say, oh, I don't know how to be a house manager. I said, do you run your house? Oh yeah, I do. You can be a house manager because basically you just, right. Basically, you're looking at this, this room and you're trying to keep everyone safe in it, trying to keep it clean, making sure people have a good time there. So this is what, this is what we do. So, um, the box office covers whether it's a school event, whether it's our event, whether it's a rental. We, we are always there. So that covers that. We have our series and which, which includes a children's show, which has been fun because we feel very strongly that we should be, um, training people to be a good audience. And it has to happen. And one of our members was talking to a child who came in and his feet were on the seat, you know, and so she asked him to please, do you do that at home? Well, you know, so we're trying to train these young people. We have added to our programs two musicals and that is always the first thing people want. If you ask them, what, what do you want to see here? And they always say musicals. So this year we had The Hunchback of Notre Dame, Notre Dame, and we also had Your Good Man Charlie Brown. And we really enjoyed being able to, um, ask some of the schools to come in during the day. And we're going to try to increase that program next year so that they can have. And they were darling when they came in, a lot of kindergartners. And you could tell they'd never had this kind of experience before and they were so excited. So that was, that was really fun. We have added, Maryann's baby has been a lecture series. And so we've had, Gary was actually one of our lecturers, which we really appreciated. And it's during the week and the exhibition room. And, um, we're going to have a few more of those next year. And then finally, something I'm really proud of is our fine arts, um, uh, galleries. And so we've turned the lobby and the exhibition room into a gallery. And I know that there are students that have never walked into a gallery before. And we have added to this a master class. So when, when someone, um, brings their art in, we ask them if they would talk to the students. And so typically they will invite the class, or the teacher will invite the classroom to come in. It, it's really fun to watch. I try to always go. She'll usually, it's usually, um, lately it's Alexis. And, um, she'll have a, everyone has a piece of paper and she has questions and they'll pick a piece and then answer these questions. And then they have questions to the artist. And sometimes the artist goes into the classroom and gives a particular, um, technique. So I'm really been excited about this. I, I watched, uh, some students come out of the, um, the theater one day and they were special needs students and the teacher was talking to them. They were so excited about seeing these pictures. They were, uh, happened to be animals at the time. So I've seen a lot of wonderful things happen that way. And it also is great for the community members because they have an opportunity. Their typical comment is like, oh my gosh, I never gotten to see all my work up in one spot because they've got it in their studios. So it's, it's been a great opportunity. And our curator is Susan Sardi, who was a wonderful teacher in the district. And I, I just love working with her. And so she typically will make the, uh, connection with the artists and, um, oh, and another thing that happens is that our cover for our program every year is a, someone who has exhibited with us and they give us, they do the piece and then they give us this original piece of art. So we hang that in the, in the, um, in the theater. And this, this coming year, 2526, is Lexie Ziegler. And she graduated from Castro Valley and went on to one of the prestigious, most prestigious art schools of, uh, Rhode Island School of Design. And she had a showing a few months ago. And wait till you see it. It is absolutely stunning. I'm really excited for everyone to see it. And next year is our 25, 26, 20th anniversary. So mark your calendars for December, uh, January 31st. We're going to have a special event. And, uh, now I'm going to turn it over to Maryann.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, Superintendent Amadi and board members. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to as far as finances. Last year, we gave over $174,000 to the district and to the Center for the Arts. And in the last few years, um, beginning with, um, the pandemic, we purchased and installed a video live streaming system. And that has raised $20,000 in ticket sales. And we have reached out to friends and family, not only nationally, but worldwide. So they're able to view. able to view our shows. In a partnership with the school district, the Arts Foundation expended $85,000 for a new speaker system, and I'm happy to say that we're on a par with the Broadway houses. And we've been asking, we sent out an ask letter, and in the last two years, we've donated over $71,000 for new LED lighting, which is actually mandated by the state. We have, we put microphones on 50 actors for the high school's production of Les Mis, and this was an ambitious technical achievement, and you won't find any educational theater who can match that accomplishment. We are funding almost $21,000 for a pit cover to ensure safety on the stage, and we purchased new stage curtains amounting to $45,000. Working with Castro Valley Play and the Drama Department, we added another innovative asset to the theater. It's an ultra-short throw projector, and our renters love it, and it will be available, of course, to all of the students in the district, and that's bringing in revenue as well. Other expenditures were on more microphones, microphone cases, and replacement of circuit breakers. We also support the technology position at the theater by donating $50,000 each year for that, for a salary. And next year, on our docket, we will be replacing $18,000 worth of microphones, because the frequencies are changing at the theater, and they're not available anymore. So there's a lot of competition out there. We will also donate $4,000 for the new technology class for a streaming computer. And I want to emphasize that none of this could be done without the direction and the leadership and the commitment of Sean Cooper. He's an amazing, amazing employee, and he's worked so well with Ron Newhouse. They're a great team. And thank you for employing them. Thank you for supporting us, and we hope to have more good news for you in the future. Thank you.
I want to thank you so much for all of your support here to the arts in our schools. I really, many of us have seen some of these plays. I know I went to see Les Mis, and I was, me and my fiancee were just awestruck at how good it was. And I guess part of that was all of those mics that you set up and why, you know, one of the reasons it was so good. Thank you for the lighting, the live streaming, just curtains, all of it, pit cover, all of this. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Yes, Trustee Raymond.
So thank you so much for coming to share with us about all of this behind the scenes, curtain pulling, et cetera. I was, I was a drama kid in high school and majored in theater in college, and I don't do theater anymore, but the fact that our kids have such a highly professional environment to like learn how to act and sing and perform, play music in, is really, it's such a gift. I went to a school that had no theater, you know, and we had to mount all of our productions in our multipurpose room, and there wasn't even a stage. It was just, you know, don't set up any tables on this end of the room. That's our, that's our stage. And, you know, I mean, we did some good stuff, but, I mean, this is really such an incredible gift. My son is actually, he volunteers, he's a high school student here, but he volunteers to work on the sets and to be on the crew. And I just want to kind of sing the praises of Ron for a moment. You guys mentioned Ron. Ron is really like, he's such, he's so great. Like, the way he has taught these kids how to like, not just build things, but to really take pride in the work that they're doing, and if something's not right, it's okay to take the time to take it apart and try it again, you know? So the theater, as you guys know, you're talking about like all the technical needs of theater, there's so much more to what we're seeing, you know? And the fact that we have this available to our students and our community really is a gift. My family on the East Coast has been able to watch our plays and the stuff that my son has worked on because of the live streaming, you know? So that's such a wonderful gift. And I also just want to say, thank you for mentioning the fine arts exhibits that you guys have been putting together. I personally have just been like, you know, whenever I see them, it's just so incredible. And how wonderful that our students can see these things and learn from the artists, because, yeah, a lot of kids might not have the opportunity to like go into the city and go to the museums and see everything there, but to have it like literally right in front of us here, what a gift. So, yeah, I'm, thank you so much for presenting, and thank you so much for the energy that you guys put into making our arts be able to happen the way they happen. So it's really quite, quite a gift. Thank you.
Trustee Kuziak.
Okay. I'll just echo the thanks broadly. You know, I was thinking about, growing up in Norfolk, Virginia, our big art thing was to go see Ton Giovanni, the opera. It did not go well. But I loved your comments about building sort of cultural competency, you know, talking about how we act in a theater, and it's wonderful to have that community asset right there on our school campus and how it really does support all of our students. I think it's a great opportunity. We were talking earlier about our facilities needs committee, sorry, the workshops. I think that's a great idea to like maybe rally the arts community to show up and talk about what do we need? What does the 21st century sort of arts complex look like on our school campus? I know my son, who's in the marching band, has a lot of thoughts about his current facility that he is doing marching band in, but there's just a lot of synergies there. And what a lot of people don't appreciate, I would say we sort of have a magnet level program in a lot of our arts programs, thanks to people like Blaine Torpey and Chris Fortenberry and others who have made that happen over the years. And we have a pipeline of students, right? Prop 28, I think we have to be very mindful of those kids coming. I already know from my sources in the Castro Valley High School band that next year, there's gonna be a lot more students in that marching band. So this is probably a really great opportunity for us to think about facilities and think about how we engage these young artists even more, and happy to be a partner with that. I want to thank you.
Trustee Howard.
A lot's been said, and I agree with all of it, so I won't repeat it, but I would like to point out one other thing that I think is pretty, that always amazes me when I go in there, and that is, the CFA is what now, 10, 12, or more years old, or something like that?
Twenty.
Twenty. And it looks great. And I think a lot of that's because of, you guys have pumped a lot of money into it, and I think the district is taking good care of it, and the community's taking good care of it. And not only does it look new, as you guys were pointing out tonight, there are a lot of new things in there. Just keeps getting better and better. So I think just the, just the physical aspects of it are just amazing to me. Thank you for all of that.
Superintendent Amati.
Agreed with everything that you've already heard. I wanted to, again, reiterate, I've seen school districts that have beautiful, that build beautiful theaters, and in five years, you look at it and you're like, what happened? And, I mean, after 20 years looking that beautiful, it's because we have, we have someone who's mothering it and parenting it and taking care of it, CVAF. So I wanted to thank both of you and the whole team. I also wanted to say, I really appreciate how you have focused and brought in like children's shows, because to your point, there are lots of students who don't get to see that at a young age, and I think it's just beautiful that it's right here and they get to see it. So I wanted to thank you about that. And I, like we've all said, I know you work really, really hard to make that happen, and the art show is beautiful. So I want to say, before you leave, everybody who's here, you might want to walk out and down the hallway. It's absolutely beautiful with artwork from the high school. We have some incredible students, and I agree with you, like our art programs are amazing, and they do need amazing facilities for all of our, for band, for everything else. So it's just beautiful. You can go up this, all the way down this way, and all the way down the hallway. But thank you for your report.
Just looking last week, I couldn't believe, these are high school students?
Yeah.
It's some next level stuff down there. And that's one of the privileges, I suppose, of being able to come into this office is to see all the student art.
Yeah, the art is in the hallways is really amazing. Some of it makes you stop and think, right? Which is what you want. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Eden Area ROP and Blaine Torpey and company.
Good evening, President Adams, trustees, Dr. Zamora, Assistant Superintendent Chan, Master of Ceremonies, Superintendent Amati. It's a real pleasure and honor to be here. It's in my third year of serving as a superintendent of the Eden Area ROP. My name's Blaine Torpey. It is an incredible place to be, and I think it, there's a great synergy with everything else that's happening in the district. So, you know, I come here and I get to hear about what's continuing, and it's pretty incredible. So our partnership drives hundreds of Castro Valley students to college and career readiness, helping them find careers of their choice. And that's a really important thing that I think sometimes we'll forget when we're thinking about students planning their future, is what are their interests, and what are their passions, and what are their desires? And ROP allows us to help students explore those passions and desires. Our core values are very, very important to us, and I think in this time, it's critical, I really, actually want to read equitable. We believe that the Eden Area ROP in fostering belonging and creating a safe and inclusive environment that works to eradicate the impacts of racism, bias, discrimination, and privilege. And one of the ways we do that is by celebrating one another. Recently, the WASC Commissioner, of the state, the Chair of the Board, released a beautiful letter explaining equity, diversity, and inclusion, without those words, but the focus. And really, that's for us at the ROP, is making sure that we're connecting with each and every student, celebrating who they are, where they want to be in their life. Pardon me? Oh, yeah. Absolutely. It's really good. So CTE, Career Technical Education, you know, it's academic skills, professional skills, and then the student's favorite part is getting their hands in things and really being active and moving and grooving. So what are we? We are the connective tissue between TK-12, adult programs, industry partners, municipalities, government agencies, community-based organizations, and the community at large. So currently, there's still work happening with the California Master Plan for Career Education. And when I was participating in a meeting with the Governor's Office last week, that was one of the things that I was really trying to point out, is that we are career education. And, you know, the benefit of having our systems designed around that will really address some of our workforce development needs, but again, going back to students' interests, really connecting students to their future. We have 12 programs active right now on our campus in Hayward, and then next year, we're starting our Zero Emission Vehicle Technology Program. So we're currently writing the curriculum from scratch. It's daunting, but it's happening, and it's pretty miraculous. We have a very excellent team working on it. We cover 13 of the state's 15 industry sectors, 20 pathways at the high school sites, and then 12 at our center. Last year, we served 5,000 high school students and over 2,500 adults. So for our high school programs, you know, we support San Lorenzo, San Leandro, Castro Valley, and Hayward Unified. For all of the support we provide for Castro Valley Unified, it's about 1,326 students, 10 CVUSD teachers, and then between the teachers that we have on your campus and the students that come to our campus, about 200 students overall. And this year, we have 81 Castro Valley Unified School District students at the center. And again, I'm really grateful for everyone's collaboration on making sure that CVHS and Redwood students have access in the morning and the afternoon. So it's doubled the number of students that are participating. Best part, I used to say this for the end, and I realized, actually, we gotta just move this whole part up. So I'm really excited to introduce Jeffrey and Damian. Quick, before I make them come up here and talk, I just want to say a little bit about them. So they're both student ambassadors. So every year, we have about 30, you know, 25 to 30 ambassadors in the morning and in the afternoon, and they are student leadership. We have over 100 students apply for that role. It's a very, you know, it's this incredible opportunity for, you know, they're doing leadership in their classroom, but this is school-wide leadership. They're the voice of the students. They help shape our programming, our direction, our goals. And they're also, they are those true ambassadors. When people come to campus, that's who they interact with. When our middle school students come to campus, the sophomore tours. So it's a real powerful place for them to be, and then we have these just incredibly powerful young people in those roles. So it was interesting, listen, one thing I didn't know about Jeffrey is actually he was in Les Mis. So like, you know, there's this full circle thing happening here. And then when Damian came into my office to meet with me prior to this, he actually was a speaker at our Business Partner of the Year event, so this, you know, speaking thing's old hat for him. So we were just checking in, and he looked at one of the restorative justice books on my table and said, oh, I know that book. So he's participating in the restorative justice program at Castro Valley High School, and so I'm, you know, very proud to see that, you know, our students, they're doing the career education, but they're incredibly well-rounded. They're touching so many important aspects in the community. So with that, I'll introduce Jeffrey. Come on up, Jeffrey Arthur, Arthur, to talk about medical careers.
Good evening to you all, members of the board, faculty, and families. My name is Jeffrey Arthur, and I'm a junior at Castro Valley High School. I was asked to speak to you tonight on behalf of Eden Area ROP and the Medical Assisting Program. I chose to be a part of this program to have a more hands-on experience, discussion, and really just to see what else is out there. The day-to-day in high school can get very repetitive for me. This is why I chose to be an ROP, to explore and expand under the guidance of a specific program. This is my first year in ROP. I truly had no idea what I was doing when I arrived. It took about three weeks in the class for me to realize this is where I needed to be, not just where I was assigned to be or where I was supposed to be. Being in ROP has changed me. It's given me a chance to expand my leadership, teamwork, and problem solving. My freshman year was my first year in Castro Valley. I didn't know anyone. I wasn't in any sports and wasn't really sure what direction I was going. I finished freshman and sophomore year with a GPA of 2.5. After sophomore year, I decided I want to take school more seriously. I knew I had to decide what I want my future to look like. While choosing my classes for junior year, I thought back to my sophomore tour and remembered the medical class. I knew that moment, that that's what I was doing. On my first day, I was trying to find my class, and I asked Mr. Torpey to help me find it. He asked if I, he noticed I had Mr. Jackson and immediately started saying good things and how much of a great teacher he was. Only a couple minutes into the class, I knew I would learn so much from him and his experience. He's a hands-on teacher. He does class discussions, notes, and gives us some really hard lessons, but I'm kind of thankful for those. He expanded my thinking to limits I didn't even think I could go to, and I even started to like and do good in school. In fact, I'm excelling in all my classes. I have an average of 3.9 to 4.1 GPA this year. Truly a difference to the ROP program. Thank you. I've built confidence and skills in a life-changing direction. Since we had a visit from Falc EMS, my entire outlook has changed. That's exactly where I want to be, a first responder who can help everyone in our community. Falc provides emergency service to everyone in Alameda County. This and the fact that I get to help people from all backgrounds and cultures is why I want to become a paramedic. I currently serve as an ambassador for the Eden Area ROP. This program has played a major role in who I have become this year. The ambassadors host events at the ROP, not only for the students and members for the community, but also for future students. It has been a way I can meet new people, meet new people and build leadership skills. Thank you all for listening and coming tonight. Showing up is the hardest part, so thank you for being here and for your, and continued support for the Eden Area ROP program. Thank you.
Excellent, Jeffrey. Come on, Damian, you're up next.
My name is Damian Savores. I am a senior at Castro Valley High School, and I am in the Automotive Technology Program at Eden Area ROP. My first introduction to ROP was during the sophomore presentations. My sophomore year was kind of confusing. I didn't really know what I wanted to do in my life. I felt I was behind. Like, all of my other classmates and people I'd known knew what they wanted to do. They knew where they wanted to go to college. They knew what they wanted to major in, and yet I was behind. I didn't know what I wanted to do. After the presentation and seeing how ROP offered career technical education and hands-on learning, as well as offering a step into the working world of an actual like trade or job, I felt that's something that I'm very interested in. And so I signed up I felt that's something that I'm very interested in, and so I signed up for the tour. Initially, I was interested in the reconstruction ROP class. However, when I got to the ROP Center and I walked around the classes, when I stepped into the auto technology class, I knew right then and there that I wanted to do that. I just seeing the cars on lifts, seeing kids work on engines, seeing everything that was being done there, I knew that it was something that I wanted to see myself doing in the future and has built where I'm going in my future as a career choice. I wasn't able to take the ROP my junior year because I had to take a few classes to get my credits built, not built up, but I had to take an art, had to take other stuff like that. But I enrolled in it my senior year because I believed in it so strongly that it was going to help me step into the world and build my future. So far, my experience at ROP has been really positive. Before coming here, I took the, I took Mr. Reese's course at CVHS. And right, Mr. Reese is such a great teacher. I owe him honestly, probably about half of me wanting to go into the auto career because of his like guidance. He's been a really big help. Even now, he, I don't have his class, but he'll still check in. He'll still talk to me. He'll still ask, like, how's it going? And that connection is so meaningful to me because it shows that he actually cares. And that's, he's been one of the biggest like inspirations as becoming an automotive technician. Another thing that's been especially meaningful at ROP has been the ability to meet other students. I've been in the CVUSD district since I was a kindergartner. I went to CVE, then I went to Canyon, and now I'm here at CVHS. So I've never been able to meet students really outside of our district, and ROP has allowed me the chance to not only meet students, but to gain a new perspective of how their lives are, how their lives are in San Leandro and Hayward, and get to expand my like horizons and talk to new people and just overall and like learn new things compared to staying here and talking to the same people that I've known since I was five. And it has, has been really fun because some of the like my, I've met a lot of good people there. Even in the ambassador program, everyone that I've met has been really kind and has showed me that there's, I mean, there exists a world outside of CVUSD that I could have friends outside of my school district. That sounds obvious now, but when I was like growing up, I always thought, oh, my friends have to be from Castro Valley. Like, I don't know how I would meet people from other school districts, but ROP has given me that chance to become friends and like grow from that. Overall, honestly, ROP is not only helping grow as a student, but it's also helped me grow as an adult. I'm 18 now, and I'm two months away from stepping into the real world. And I honestly owe ROP a lot because not only did they help me find my career choice, they also helped me kind of learn how to be an adult, in a sense, because Mr. O'Leary, the auto teacher there, has also taught me a lot of skills, not just auto, but has also talked to me a lot about life and how, what my direction should be after high school. And that alone has been a big support and a really huge help, and I'm thankful to him and Mr. Reese for both helping guide me in my career choice and helping guide me as an adult. Thank you.
This was one of those microphones I would drop it because we're done. Both very much. The funding, so we're, we appreciate your support. We do as much as we can to support CVUSD. I'm very excited about the Strong Workforce Program grants that we have coming up next year. We have two grants. One that's going to be focused on English learners and their access, exposure, and enrollment in CTE programs. So we're going to be working on developing K-14 pathway maps for certain sectors for English learners, depending on where they are in their classification level. So we want to have a clear pathways for students if they're newcomers, if they're long-term English learners, or if they're, you know, getting out of ELD III and ready to move on. The other one's Priority Access Dual Enrollment, focusing on Hispanic-Latino students' access to dual enrollment. So I'm very excited about that. So our dual enrollment model is during the school day, a lot of lead times, so students are really supported. Last year, we had an 89% success rate for our three dual enrollment courses. So we're very, very out of that work and want to continue it and make sure that every student has the opportunity to earn early college credit. Medical assisting careers, just giving you a snapshot of one of our Jeffreys Pathway. Two-year program, A through G, Year Two is honors designation. I always like to make sure everyone understands that it's very rigorous. I had someone kind of questioned the rigor, and I said, well, you go take blood pressure, read an EKG, change a tire, weld a joint, and then we'll talk about rigor. So there's some incredible things happening on the campus. Articulation agreements with Chabot. We're working with Chabot right now, and that's part of our dual enrollment effort. Clinical learning in the classroom. If you go in there, you're going to get your blood pressure checked, so I'm always, not always interested in that. Year Two internships during the school day in medical clinics and hospitals, and then we also partner with Faces of the Future, which is a program that operates in St. Rose Hospital. Dozens of industry partners. Graduates go on to post-secondary. They work in clinics, so many, many opportunities. And I think that's one of the things too, is like there's a medical assisting pathway, but we also want to know that that threads out into hundreds of different jobs in the medical field. The Zero Emission Training Program, it's happening, very excited about it. AC Transit has really done an amazing job being a partner for us this year. So it's, we're having a recruitment effort where we're having students go to AC Transit for a tour. We have 50 spots open for Zero Emission Vehicles Program next year, and we have two students pre-enrolled, 48 to go, so I'm pretty excited about that. Our adult programs, we serve adults from anywhere. We actually have some adults that are in Ohio that are taking our Electrical Continuing and Education Program for our DSP, a direct service provider. They're all over the state. We served about 2,977 students last year and 2024, you know, an incredible array. We added of options. We added cybersecurity this year, so that's been very popular with our adults as well. We have a campus in Turlock that does electrical education. We work with HPN, Live in Peace, and about 10 other organizations to have scholarship funds for our adult students. Dental assisting pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship pipeline, this one is very, very exciting. So we are dangerously close to getting our official Department of Apprenticeship Standards number. We have our unofficial number. Once it's official, then the adult apprentices, they don't pay a dime. They come in, they sign up, they get the related supplemental instruction. They do about 12 months of related supplemental instruction with on-the-job training. We have 39 dental offices that are committed to hiring one of our apprentices. Then we also have pre-apprenticeship at the high school level, so they'll do their two years. After they graduate, they've done their two years of dental assisting. That's their related supplemental instruction. They do six months externship where they're getting paid. Then they come back to two standalone certifications that are part of the whole program, so they don't pay for that either. So after six months of graduating, they will be, you know, able to be registered dental assistants. And then after that, it's a lot of stackable certification. So we have a lot of students that are interested in going to hygienist school, dental school. So it's a really incredible study for students, and my favorite part is that it's free to them. Middle College Initiative, been doing a lot of work on this, very excited about it. Chabot has actually already secured space for us, and President Cooks told me that people are trying to muscle in, and he says, no way. He's got the shoulders for it. So the first cohort, hopefully in fall 2026. At this point, maybe fall 2027, but trying to press hard. Year One costs are completely covered by Eden Area ROP, so we have that in the bank, ready to go. Students graduate high school, close to completing an AA. And one of the most important things about this is that, you know, it's really an educational option. We want to focus on students at the cusp who may not know that they're going to be really successful in the post-secondary environment. You know, and one of the best things about it is that these students will be saving an incredible amount of money as they pursue their path. And it will be touching and connected to Chabot's guided pathways, which is their version of CTE, so CTE-related. This is the last slide, and it's really small, so you're going to have to print it out and expand it. But really, I was thinking about the MTSS model, right, of looking at a kind of a tiered approach. So Tier One is the services that we provide to our partner districts, kind of district-wide. And one of the ones that I spend a lot of time on is the advocacy. And so the point I want to make is that tomorrow, I'll be participating on a panel at one of the Senate Subcommittee's because it's legislative season. And one in my remarks, I actually comment on that JPA ROPs like us exist because of your support and because of the vision that Castro Valley's had for a long time about how important this is for students. So I'm very grateful for that. When a lot of times when I advocate, I'm really thinking about our students. Tier Two, Direct Services, we provide to your campuses. That's teachers on your campus or supporting your CTE teachers and students. And then Tier Three is all the students that come to our center. So I'm actually very excited about being able to really list all the things that we're doing. Very, very grateful and proud of our staff, and of course, our students are amazing. And lastly, before I say thank you and good night, Superintendent Amati, thank you for your bravery, for your love of students, for your mentorship, your guidance. It's been a very, very powerful opportunity to work with you, for you, and I too am excited to see what's next. Thank you. Thank you for everything. We'll take questions. Hard ones go to the students, soft ones go to me.
Yes, Trustee Kuziak.
I think we're still a little, little angry at Trustee Howard when he hired you away to the ROP, but it looks like you have found where you need to be, and you've really flourished there. I just thought Jeffrey and Damian, you're fantastic ambassadors, and of these, of these programs, one of the things I really think about as a trustee is how do we communicate that there's just so many different ways to find who you are supposed to be? And it can be working on a car. It can be being a medical assistant. It can be going to Colgate College. You know, it can be one of many things, and there's no right way of doing it. And I just really hope that we can do an increasingly better job at just telling the world that we have these fantastic pathways, and I'm happy that you guys found these pathways, and we're inspired. Our auto program at Castro Valley High School, that's some next-level stuff. I mean, it's pretty intense, and I'm just, I don't know if people appreciate that, and I'd like to do a better job telling the story that we're not just trying to send kids off in one direction here. We, we, we support all pathways to your sort of self-realization, if you will. So I want to thank you all for, for being on those pathways, and thank you for being, and I hope you go out there and evangelize with your, your friends at Castro Valley High School and let them know what the options are. So thank you.
Trustee Raymond.
So I'm just going to say, as a parent, the thing I hope most for my kids is they find something that they're passionate about and something that really drives their desire to go out in the world. And it's so clear that both of you have found your passion, you know? And it's like to listen to you guys talk about it, really, I think that's a great example of, you know, as a trustee here and as a parent, I want all of our kids here in Castro Valley to feel exactly the way you guys do when you look at your opportunities. You know, Damian, my car doesn't need any work right now, but I want to know that when I take it to somebody, it's going to be worked on by someone who really is enjoying what they're doing, you know, and really interested in solving those problems. Unfortunately, my family has had to call ambulances in the past few years for various reasons, and you know, we've been very lucky to have paramedics who've been really kind and generous, and I can tell that you will be that person, you know? And I hope I don't have to call an ambulance, but if I do, I hope you're on it, you know? You know, we want, that's, that's all we want in the world. It's like people doing jobs that they love doing. And you guys are going to do fine in the world because clearly you've found the passion. I have to say personally, like, I love being an ROP board member. It's, I, every time I sit down to talk about ROP or hear more about ROP, I'm like, I love ROP. This is so great. And it just like my heart swells and I feel happy, you know? So I, thank you for coming to share your stories today, and Blaine, thank you so much for like, clearly you have also found your passion, you know, and, and your place. It's like, you know, you're the, I don't know more words, but it's, there, there are just really some wonderful things happening there. Thank you.
Trustee Howard.
Well, thanks for another great report on ROP, and I'm clearly prejudiced about that program. I've been able to watch it close, a close hand for 12 years now, and you know, you have to be there sort of to really appreciate it, I think. It's, the culture over on Hisparian is really different. You know, the enthusiasm and even the passion of the students over there is just really very different. I mean, the only other training environment I've ever seen that kind of enthusiasm in is, maybe surprisingly, is the military, you know? But it's, there's a lot of similarities around that. And I think what you and Linda and all the others have done over there is really remarkable over the last years. I mean, and you mentioned the grants, but those grants have just opened up a world over there to be able to do a lot of new things. And I'm really pleased to see the adult program has just blossomed into, from nothing to this just, it's its own world and everything. It's just, it's terrific program all around, whether you're on the campus or on, over there at Hisparian. It's great. And you're the right guy to be over there running it. So thanks for all you're doing. Good luck to you two guys, too.
Superintendent Amati.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say this. I wish there were a couple of people here before who sometimes ask what we do, and I wish they had stayed and watched this. It's on video, so hopefully they will have an opportunity to see it. Maybe we'll send it to them. But I wanted to say, we're so fortunate to have Mr. Torpe because he had a choice when he wanted to spread his wings. And he chose ROP because it's just the perfect place, and we're lucky to have you. Thank you. I wanted to say, Jeffrey, just like trustee Raymond said, if I'm ever, or any of my family ever needs to be in an ambulance and with a paramedic, I would want them to be with someone like you. Thank you so much. Did a great job. You're going to be busy. Yeah. And then, yeah, and Damian, you are so gracious and so wonderful about remembering like all of the people who have impacted you. And, and again, we want people to love what they're doing. That's why we are here, because we love this work. And it helps you grow. It helps you actually wake up in the morning and want to do this. So just thank you so much for, for your presentations, both of you. And Mr. Torpe is very humble, but it takes a lot to do all of these new things because ROP is already so wonderful, and then to continue to improve it is just incredible. Middle College is a dream, and I think it's, don't worry, it's going to happen because you got it. And then the zero emission, I mean, you think you have two students, you'll probably have to have a lottery. So thank you so much.
Yes. I wanted to thank Jeffrey for his enthusiasm in the medical fields. You know, besides this that I do, I work part-time in Hayward. I have one of my students who I think just has enrolled in the, the medical fields who would like to be in the veterinary and science section somewhere, but starting, of course, in medical fields. So that's a wonderful program that people are really very interested in. And then Damian, I have an odd question for you. So I bought a RAV4 plug-in hybrid. And I know how gas engines work because of physics and all, but I have no idea how the electric part of my car works. I know it has less parts. Is that part of a zero emission or not? I don't know if that's part of your zero emission program, a plug-in. You know what I mean? That's partially electric.
In terms of, I'm in automotive, and we do, we do look at electric cars and hybrid cars. We don't touch on them too much. But since I'm an ambassador, I have been, I've been given the opportunity to kind of look into the zero emissions class, and I can answer that during the, in the zero emissions class, you will not only look at plug-in hybrids, you will also look at fully electric vehicles. And I believe the teacher had mentioned that one of the activities that he's going to have the students doing is actually learning how to not only fix them, but also build a battery so that you can fix electric vehicles' body and interior as well.
Okay, thank you. You, I think you did a great job answering my question.
Oh, I have a question for Damian.
I started it now, I'm sorry.
What's the deal with my fob? Because I have to replace the battery in it now like every month, and I've just like given up. They know me at Pete's. I go into Pete's and they, like, what's that all about?
How often are you driving?
Much, like just, you know, around town. I just, I'm just, I'm very angry at my fobs. So that's all. I appreciate what you're doing though, man.
Trustee Howard.
Trustee Howard.
Yeah, I have one more comment, and I made this comment last year, I think. And, you know, I've been on the board for 12 years now, and two of my most proud accomplishments are in the room now.
That is so sweet. And trustee Raymond.
So we're doing kind of like round robin tonight. Usually we, like, say everything we want to say and then move on. One of the things that also just occurred to me, especially listening to you talk about, like, zero emissions and, you know, batteries and building them, and, you know, the T is technical, right? And technical technology, you guys are on the cutting edge of understanding our world, you know, as it continues to evolve. And one of the kind of neat things about that is that, you know, when we think about kids going into, like, technical education, I think a lot of us on the board probably grew up in a time where maybe that wasn't favored as a choice. But I think that there's been a big shift in how we're thinking about it. And I definitely have changed the way I think about it, you know? And I am, I think, you know, you guys are going to be leaps ahead of your peers because you have had access to learning about cutting-edge technology in the fields that interest you. And that benefits all of us, you know? So go for it. I love it.
And thank you so much for being ambassadors. I don't know if you know, but I think you and I went to ROP as Castro Valley ambassadors. And I think that's a really great program for us. And you are wonderful examples of great ambassadors for ROP. Thank you. All right, our next item here is Public Hearing Presents Sunshine Proposals for CVUSD and CSEA on Article reopeners. So I'm opening the hearing. Do we have any comments? Since we have no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. We now have a public hearing presents, oh, it looks like the same thing. Sorry. Ah, okay. Thank you. Open public hearing for CBTA. Do we have any comments there? I'm going to close the public hearing for the CBTA Sunshine Proposals. All right, how about now 11E, the Personnel Report?
I move that we approve the Personnel Report.
Hold a second.
All right. Trustee Kuziak.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That's four zero. Personnel Report is approved. And now Board Member Comments.
Hi there.
Trustee Kuziak.
Yeah, so last week was a busy week engaging with our special education community. Maybe it was the week before. I don't know. But I went to the Mid Alameda County Special Education... What's the LPN name?
SELPA.
What's the LPA? What? Mid Alameda County Special Education.
Local planning area.
Plan area. So basically, it's all of our, you know, school districts that work in partnership. And that was a really fantastic conversation to have there and see how we work in partnership among the four districts. We are still waiting to get representatives from San Leandro Unified, but one of the things that came out of the conversation was how can we better help special education parents and guardians understand what's out there? You know, I was confused with the alphabet soup I was going through last week because after that, I went to the Special Education Parents Committee that we have just for Castro Valley Unified. It was also the same week that the SELPA had one for the SELPA. So that was something that I just want to put out there to let, you know, special education parents know that they can participate at those meetings. I'm going to be working with someone I met in the special education community. I, too, am a special ed parent, and we're meeting, I think it's tomorrow. We're meeting at 10:00 AM at Pompous Coffee. That's a regular time on Thursdays for special education parents just to get together and to talk, have coffee, to talk about what it's like. It's not about necessarily advocacy or anything. It's just sort of like a peer support network, peer-to-peer support. I think it's really important. So I'm really excited to see how this community is stepping up to support each other. I don't think I did anything else in support of the district, but as just sort of an occasional and probably a weekly reminder whenever I'm here that it's never too late to step up to fascism. Thanks.
Trustee Howard.
I just have a couple of things here, and none of them are directly related to the schools. The first one is that the Rotary Club gave out grants this last week. It's our second round this year. This is for $10,000. Can't remember who they were for right now, but it'll be out soon. And the second thing is, a week from today, I'll be out of town for about 10 days, but I'll be available by phone or email. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Raymond.
Yeah, so I represented the district over the last couple of weeks by attending Parent Leadership Committee, I think, in the last couple of weeks. I can't remember. We had a Board Policy Subcommittee. Thank you for approving our changes. Trustee Kuziak was there as well. And got to attend the CVHS production of "They Promised Her the Moon", and that was nice to go and see, you know, families and district staff and faculty there also. And it was great, so hopefully everyone got a chance to see that. And I think that's all I've got for the last couple of weeks. Been busy personally.
Okay, great. I don't have too much here, and I think some of it maybe I reported on before and some I didn't. I met with Parveen, of course, last week to look at the agenda and what was going to be on here. That same week, I did a lot of lobbying, two of them for CSBA. And one of the things that we were advocating for was the 60 Days for a Substitute. And that has now, I understand, has gone out of the Education Committee and now gone to the next step. So hopefully that means some of that lobbying did work with Senator Grayson and Assembly Member Liz Ortega. The other lobbying I did was with Senator Padilla and Adam Schiff for USAID funds to still keep helping people around the world and also that it is very good for us to be spending that money to help eradicate diseases so that they don't come back to us. It builds goodwill around the world for the United States. It also, some of this money helps, like, education for girls and various other things that we were asking for. But it's mostly health and education is where the focus is for USAID and is really good for the United States. You know, we get to be the good guys when we do that. And that's about it. I don't think I had any other things that I did for the district. There are many other meetings, but not related. Parveen, I'm sorry, Superintendent Amati, do you have anything else?
No, April 17th is the Student Citizen Awards.
April 17th. Thank you.
Lunchtime.
Okay. Student Citizen.
Yeah.
All righty, then. With all of that, we are going to adjourn.